Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 1st meeting of the Des Moines Planning and Zoning Commission. I will start by reading our rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes from our previous meeting? If not, could we have a motion to approve those? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Anyone passing? Thank you, minutes are approved. First order of business, before we get to the public hearing, is to recognize Justin Lewis for his service. Justin was on the board since March 21st, 2022, and he has resigned from the board, but we want to express our appreciation for your service. And we have a certificate.
I really didn't want to come, guys. I don't like to be front-centered, but yeah, I'm really thankful to be a part of all of this. I'll be honest, I really just want to focus on my family. I went through a really terrible divorce. I think you guys probably heard a little bit about that. And I just want to be there for my kids, so they're still grieving. They're going to help my mom and daughter along together. I've found balance and peace again in my life, so with that, I like my freedom. And I took to enjoying it, so that's why I just stopped showing up. Finding a new normal was difficult, but I know there's somebody else that's going to take this leave of their job. I'll still show up and appear. There's still some things that are going on in Des Moines that need surgery. I just saw a family get evicted in Hyde Memorial, right? So, all of their stuff was removed and put on the curb, all of it. A family of six, and they've been sleeping on the road since, right? So, it's those injustices why I took that decision. It's those reasons why I spoke up. It's why I fought about before the sidewalk being there, right? You're making millions of dollars, there should be a reason why you can afford a sidewalk, for our children in this community to be safe. So, I ask that you guys would take the mantle, my torch, of the things that I spoke about, specifically community, people that share my skin color, people that are underprivileged that don't have the funds to come here, right? Because they're feeding their family noodles and noodles and ramen noodles and canned goods, right? That's where I come from. I'm from the east side of from Des Moines, proud of it, wear my class ring, class of '08, right? Please take that mantle up. And if you guys can't speak, reach out to me, because I will proudly come here and speak my mind. I will, because I love this city. It's why I ran for office twice. It's why I said, "God, pick me," right? Pick me for the people that are weak, lame, and broken, that don't have the spirit to speak up for themselves because they're hungry and try to feed their family. So, that's why I did it. I'm appreciative of this, but it's not about me. It's about Des Moines continuing to go forward and people being represented the way they should. So, thank you. I love you guys. Thanks for being gentle with me. Thanks for covering me when I was dawned, because I was suffering from a broken heart, and that's the real thing. I'm in a good space now, so reach out. I'm appreciative, and I don't know if I'll be back, but I'll be happy to come back and speak.
Thank you.
Love you guys. All right, I'm getting back to work, so.
Okay, we've got a short agenda tonight. I'll start with the consent public hearing item. Number one is a request from D. Wright Properties, represented by Dane Wright, for a vacation of approximately 38, 3,817 square feet of a north-south dead alley right-of-way in the vicinity of 729 Southwest 63rd Street, which is within the block bounded by Wynona Avenue to the south and Tonka Avenue to the north, to allow the vacated area to be assembled and maintained for private use. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like this item pulled from the consent, excuse me, from, yes, from the consent agenda and discussed? Anyone on the commission? Okay, item number one will stay on consent. Could we have a motion to move the consent item?
So moved.
Thank you, Carolyn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. We'll move to the public hearing item. Item number two is a request from the District Developers, represented by Tim Ripma, regarding property located at 301 Southeast 4th Street, for the following expedited type-two design alternatives in accordance with city code. A, waive the occupied space requirement along East MLK Junior Parkway frontage, where a minimum 30-foot depth of occupied space on all full-height floors of primary frontages is required. B, allow enclosed parking within the principal building along East MLK Junior Parkway, where required to be behind occupied space. And C, allow surface parking where prohibited, per section 135. And today Tanner will present this item.
Yes, good evening, members of the commission. Tanner Hemmer for Planning Staff. Item number two is a request from the District Developers LLC for three expedited type-two design alternatives for a planned development at 301 Southeast 4th Street. Here we can see the site located in the southeast corner of the Market District. Here's a few pictures. The top one is the most recent aerial view available to the city. The bottom photo is the site looking southwest. Here the top photo is the site looking northwest, and the bottom is the site looking southeast. This photo shows the south portion of the site, as well as the right-of-way along East Martin Luther King Junior Parkway. And this photo has stepped a little bit further back, looking northeast at the site, from the south side of East MLK. Here is a brief project narrative that was provided by the development team. The development plans to be the construction of two six-story buildings, split up into two separate phases. The bottom story, the ground floor of each building, plans to be occupied space along Southeast 4th Street, as well as enclosed parking. The top stories plan to be apartment units. Each building will hold 250 units each, for a total of 500 between the two. There will also be a surface parking lot in between each building. Here we can see a quick layout of the site. We can see both buildings here with occupied space along Southeast 4th Street, as well as that enclosed parking behind that occupied space as well. In the center, we see the proposed surface parking lot. As I mentioned, the plan is to approach this development in two phases. The first phase would see the construction of the south building along East MLK Junior Parkway, as well as the south row of parking and the drive aisle for the surface parking lot. Phase two would follow phase one, and would see the construction of the north building, as well as the north row of parking for that surface parking lot. Here are a few renders provided to planning staff. You can see on the right-hand side of the screen, in the top corner, that is showing the west facade, which would face Southeast 4th Street, with that occupied space on the ground floor. The bottom right render is showing the south facade, which would face East MLK. Here are some elevations of the proposed building. The top one shows that west facade facing Southeast 4th, again with that occupied space on the ground floor. The bottom shows the south facade along MLK. Largely on the ground floor, you can see where the enclosed parking would be along that frontage. Some additional elevations showing the west facade, which would face Southeast 5th, as well as the north facade, which is planned to face the surface parking lot. Because of the separation between the south facade and sort of the pedestrian way that is present along East MLK Parkway, as well as the proposed surface parking lot being interior to the site, largely screened by both buildings, once construction is finished, staff does recommend approval of the three requested expedited type-two design alternatives. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission. Yes?
What is the time between the parking lot going up and it being covered? Like, is there any, I noticed it said, is the line of like, whenever it's economically reasonable or something in there. What, is there any anticipated time of, between parking lot and the covered parking lot? Or am I misreading how this is all laying out?
So, the covered parking, the enclosed parking, will be constructed with the building. The surface parking lot is half, going to be half-constructed for phase one, the other half during phase two. So, really, there's not a parking lot that will be eventually covered.
Did I, okay, I completely misread. So, are you able to go back? Because I thought you said that there-
Yeah, go back to slide, well, can't tell which slide. That one, yeah.
I thought this all becomes covered, or no?
Yeah, so the gray, this is, the gray area and the light blue, that's the first floor of the building, so that parking that's on the first floor of the building would all be constructed with the building, and at the same time, the southern row of stalls and that kind of service alley slash parking lot area would be constructed. And then when building two comes along, so this is, you know, the footprint of the building, if that, that you're looking at, the-
Okay, so when it's all done, there is no uncovered parking, but what you're saying is at phase one, there is a southern building plus parking along the north, the southern building?
There's just parking in that little row right in the, when you see the diagonal right there, that's kind of the green color.
So, the gray is in the building. First, the first floor of the building is primarily parking garage. It's just that there is commercial tenant bays on 4th Street. The light blue is representing those bays.
Okay, so spatially, if I'm understanding this, then I got two pink lines which are associated with phase one and two?
Yeah, the pink lines are just outlines of the phase one and two. Those are like, project area boundaries, the, and then the blue line. It's, I mean, the line work kind of, it does all bleed together, but the gray and the light blue is the building.
Does this phase north to south? So, it's like, the north building's first with an exposed parking lot that gets covered, or is it south-north?
South building will be phase one, so the south will be constructed first.
Okay, so we'll start with the south building with a covered parking lot, which is the gray, and then open white parking entries there, that alleyway, and then the rest of the building will be built over that alleyway, plus-
Yeah, the building, that, it's two buildings.
Okay, so the alleyway will always remain between it?
Yes, yeah. So, I don't know if you get the aerial, or not the, the rendering sheets. Let's see, that was what, sheet 10, slide 10? Is there one of both buildings?
No, the rendering's only showed the south building, I believe.
Okay, that's where my massive confusion was, because I thought this was one big old building, and I couldn't understand your angles on this. Okay.
Nope, yeah.
So, there will be two buildings that'll just look the same next to each other, and there'll be an alley between them?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, two buildings, alley with a parking lot, or parking angled off of it.
Yep, and you can see this, kind of this top-left render, that's the phase-one building, with the surface parking there at the bottom. This green space shown bottom-left of that render, that will be where the phase-two building is located.
Yeah, I can't read weather veins either, so I apologize. Southeast does look in the wrong direction. So, I'm looking at the alleyway, so I'm north-looking southeast, and that's the alleyway that will remain after a new building is standing right in front of my view someday.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question. I mean, the reason why regulations like this are put in place is because this much parking up against this side, it's just going to kill the walkability, right, of the neighborhood, and so I'm wondering if there's been, I mean, I'm very mindful, I see that this is a light tech development, and I'm mindful of cost, but we have two buildings sitting in concrete with parking up to the, right, the parking wall, right there. Is there, has there been any discussion of what that wall might look like to help encourage walkability or make it walkability? Is that outside of our realm? I just-
No, so I just want to clarify, on 4th Street, there's commercial tenant spaces, so you, that's what you're seeing in the upper right-hand corner.
Right, I'm talking about the other three walls.
The MLK side, and then the-
In particular, the interior ones. I'm less worried about the MLK, right, but like, that's just going to have a huge impact, should there be people that want to walk down those streets at some point.
Or alley, not street.
Yeah, the occupied space, I mean, we're picking the priority streets, you know, the 4th and MLK are our priority streets, and that's why the, there's a relief written up for MLK. Can you zoom in on the, do you have the, would be, I guess, the east elevation? Which one is?
East elevation would be this top one here.
Yeah, yeah, Southeast 5th, yeah, because the west, the truly west elevation is the storefront, so this is facing east, right?
Correct, that's my apologies. Yep, so this is the west-facing elevation.
No, 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 you're right. I think the labeling on the drawing, that's the storefronts, that faces fourth, right?
Yes.
Okay, then you switch, okay, then you switch, I was looking at the other, my screen, So, can you zoom in so people can see the materials of like, so the bottom one is what faces MLK, right? And there's screening material, so we've got perforated metal. And the applicant might also be better versed at walking us through the design, but scroll down to the MLK facade, and then slide over so we can see the material palette.
Isn't the question more one of that there is no destination for long stretch along what is intended to be a walkable road?
Yeah, and I don't, on MLK, with the property, because the right-of-way is fairly wide, and you sit further back, and the grades are changed, like, I don't anticipate, in some of these blocks along here, that you'll have necessarily like, walk-up units and, you know?
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand what the city's anticipating, right? Because we, do we have anything that shows us, are there any plans for the area, or what it's going to look like, or, right? So, I get around MLK, we might not have a lot of people walking along MLK, ever, but should, should a neighborhood develop what we have, or two boxes surrounded by concrete with sidewalks that you wouldn't walk along? Because you have this wall here, even with lovely materials, right?
Right, so this is MLK, and I, this wall is set back fairly far from the sidewalk, because where the sidewalk sits in the right-of-way. I don't know, you can go back to the aerial. I don't know that that's going to impact, and zoom in, so I, I'm not concerned really about, I don't think the MLK, I think you're, it's a more of a park-like setting. You know, obviously, the building on Southeast 5th is more on top of the sidewalk, or more right there, so I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, 5th, Elm, I mean, those are the streets that I'm thinking about specifically.
But really, the MLK elevation, it's not really a wall on the front, it's a mesh, isn't that like a-
Right.
So, it's, it's open air.
I think, isn't the greater strategic question is, let's say I want to go from the baseball park or single-speed and make sure I hit Truman's, and in order to facilitate my bar crawl, I want to stop somewhere in the middle of it. And right here, the only middle I have is a wall, when potentially I should have a commercial or other type of facility I could be using. Isn't that more the point? I want to facilitate by allowing shorter access to new destinations along the way? Increase walkability?
Yeah, I mean, there's some of that too, but we're not going to have commercial space like everywhere, so usually what we're looking for is that, kind of that interaction, you know, like, walk-up units, you know, doors, windows, you know, the places where people live, not necessarily cars. So, that, I mean, that's, that creates a vibrant, walkable, a place to walk, you know, that you feel, you feel-
Safe.
Safe, and it feels natural, you know? So, I think the question that I'm hearing is-
Where is that?
Could you, you know, and it's a question for the applicant, because there's no relief needed, but could you do walk-up units on Elm and 5th Street, and with the parking behind it?
Okay, we can address those questions to the applicant. Any more questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present? Hey, please come forward. State your name, address, and sign in when you're finished on that white sheet, and you have up to 10 minutes.
Okay, my name is Paul Hayes. I'm substituting for Tim Ripma, who's off in Western Wilds Fishing. And I'm at 350 East Locust Street, Des Moines. We're happy to answer any questions. One thing that I would like to suggest, if the commission is open to this, is that sometime in the future, we would be, we may be here again, and it might be helpful to have a oversight of the entire plan for the district. Activation along all the streets within the district has been addressed in the development plan that we did with the city. What is in this building along Southeast 4th far exceeds that level of activation. The area is very, very walkable, and the nearest pub from this particular location is a block and a half away, so as long as you didn't spend too much time at the prior pub, it's only a block and a half away.
Members of the commission, Clark Snyder, Simonson, and Associates, 1717 Engersaw. We are representing Great Lakes Capital, who's going to be the developer for this project. Nick wasn't able to make the meeting tonight, he apologizes, but again, our request here today is to take us to that next level. We need your support. Staff supports the relief on the type-twos. What you're seeing from a schematic perspective, I welcome all your comments, we'll take that as feedback, we'll work with staff, we've got to go to UDRB, we've got to go down that prep, we need to go to the next step from this schematic level to further cook architecture and design, but this is a lot of density on both of these parcels, with that first phase at 250 units. We are currently looking at a program of, I believe it's 30% one-bedrooms, 40% two-bedrooms, and 30% three-bedrooms within this first phase, and then as soon as this first phase of 250 units stabilizes, we'll look at phase two, which is to the north. The parking, the surface parking proposed is between the two buildings. It achieves a couple of things. It's visitor parking, delivery, move-in, move-out, also life safety, fire, but it also assists us in our daylighting strategies between the two phases, so we can get windows on that side as well. The building footprint, as you can see, is pretty substantial. What I haven't shared is the, it's basically five-story courtyard or lightwell to get our density and unit mix, so we're working through those design elements. We want to continue that process over the next few months. We need your support in these type-two, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. Thank you.
Can you tell us the number of spaces? I couldn't zoom in on my computer.
Oh, yeah, I think it's 168, and I would say that the, I know you had an application, a similar application, two weeks ago, that the parking ratio is .75 stalls per unit.
What's in the alley? How many in the alley?
There's 23 stalls in the alley on phase one, and I believe 21. So, we're going to pour the entire width, for life safety purposes, pave the south stalls, and then phase two, the 18-foot of depth of parking needed on that north side in that alley, if you will, will be paved as a part of phase, phase two.
And how many spaces are designated for like, the businesses, for customer parking, or is it all for the, for the units?
It hasn't been allocated, but it will be a mix of business patrons and residents and visitors.
You said this building is a .76 per unit?
Yeah.
And when you're saying per unit, so it's an aggregate number of spaces divided by a number of units?
Yes.
And are commercial units counted as units, or are you talking about residential units?
Residential only. It's not allocating any of that parking to the, to the commercial.
Okay, it's just a point of order. Tim said last time that a block and a half is too far to walk, so that may be a good argument for putting more bars in your own building here, so just as a quick reference point from last two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Because 1.5 apparently was a little too far to do a calculation and impact relative to parking, and now it seems we're changing the argument of how far, far away is good, so that seems a little disingenuous, eh?
Well, I have a bit more experience than Tim.
Well, that's clear, but.
And again, it's a different product than what you saw two weeks ago, right? It's a for-sale, I believe, cooperative housing, and this will be a market-rate home, depending, again, we're going through that market study side on what the unit mix will ultimately end up being, but, you know, you've got some two- and three-bedroom units in there too, so you're 60 or 70 stalls short of a one-to-one ratio, which we would try to achieve in other neighborhoods. We're below that in this, in this project.
So, the question that I asked earlier then, I mean, walkability is more than having a nice sidewalk and a bar a block and a half away, right? Walkability has a lot to do with design, and no matter what the materials are, when you've got a whole block that's a solid surface, or even if it's mesh, or any number of things, right, where there's no interruption, there's no, nobody you can ever make contact with- right, where there's no interruption, there's no, nobody you can ever make contact with, it kills the street.
Well, I think MLK will not die because of this. Second, we're very aware of the need for the activation at the street level. Again, we've covered this with the city in the development plan approved by the city council. The primary area for walkability is going to be Market Street. It's going to have the highest level of activation. Second Street will be activated primarily by a park to the west, but will also have street-level activation. There's going to be a limit to how much activation at street level you can have in terms of retail and restaurants, et cetera. We're going to encourage it, we're going to want it, but to a large degree, that has been addressed in the development agreement.
So, what I'm talking about more specifically is not MLK, right? And we've got 4th covered, but those other two blocks, and in particular, if you're thinking about this being homes, right, and we want a space that continues to be desirable over time, what those long surfaces look like will matter. And so, it could be, these are all things that can be addressed with design, I just hope that you'll think about that. Something interesting to look at, right? Something that breaks up the monotony of that wall, so at least you feel like you're interacting with the building when you walk by and not that you're lost and you have no place to go.
If you haven't already, I would encourage you to go there, park your car or bike over, these are accessible by bike, and just walk around and imagine what the view along Elm Street is as you walk west and you see the downtown city of Des Moines, you see the Mid-America Two Rivers Park where they have this elevated platform that you -- you're not going to be looking that way, you're going to be looking to your destination, which is going to be that nine-acre park.
Well, perhaps as a woman, I walk down the street differently than you do.
Could be.
Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in favor of this
Hi, my name is Carol Maher. I live in downtown Des Moines. I ride a bike, and I do not own a car. And my first order of business, and I'm sad that he's not here tonight, is to apologize to Mr. Ripna. Last meeting, I said that the city had put in the infrastructure that was there. I was incorrect. The city has put in $28 million worth of infrastructure. Some of the streets, the storm detention and the new pump station are all paid for by city taxpayers, but the remainder are picked up by the developers. So, I just wanted to be on record for that and apologize for my statement. I've also recently read the plan that the applicant has referenced. Let me just quote from a few things from there. "Plenty of parks, open green spaces, and trails in hopes to make this one of the greenest neighborhoods in the state. One of the biggest draws for residents in the Market District will definitely be the walkability. Although there will still be drivable streets, the plan is to have calmer traffic with narrow traffic lanes, generous sidewalks, and a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. In other words, driving is not number one there. And instead, we focus a lot tonight on how much parking we're going to have." And that just goes against everything, I know I'm repetitive here, goes against everything that this district has held itself up as it's going to be. So, I'm not going to say the same thing I said, but it just makes me sad that this is, we're going with Ankeny here, and that's too bad. We also, in the plan, we were requiring green roofs. So, hopefully, that'll be addressed in the further site plan. I'm a little confused because the document says Lytec, but the applicant said market rate. So, I can't ask him questions, but I hope he'll address that. Because in the design, it said that there was at least 10% affordable units required in each multi-unit building, and 5% at 80% AMI and 5% at 60% AMI. Well, it said that they wanted a max of three to four stories. I'm thrilled that this will be six, because you know I'm a big density hawk, so that's good. And it also says structured parking ramps built for commercial uses during the evenings, weekends, and holidays should be built. In other words, that thing called shared parking, that if parking, parking becomes sort of like its own urban myth, right? People say there's no parking on Ingersoll when it's 40% parked, right? There's all this parking available. People just think that the only parking that's really available is that free parking sitting right in front of the business I want to go to. I would hope that this, we could sort of break that message and get people to build one parking garage that they might have to walk a few blocks to get to, to get to their car. I see nothing addressed about indoor bike storage. And this is a DX, which requires first-floor activation with, you know, retail. The write-up says that they're going to have tenant amenities on the first floor. That's not activation, that's tenant amenities. So, when it says tenant on there, I don't think that's like a restaurant. That's going to be the leasing office. So, and I agree with Commissioner, as a single woman who walks, sometimes at night, sometimes by myself, long, empty spaces of no eyes on the street is not safe. And if you don't build it to accommodate a retailer in the future, you will never be able to have a retailer in the future. You'll just have the front, the hoods of cars facing at you, and I think that's unfortunate. And I'll hang up and listen because I have to make it to the central campus for the fashion show. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight who would like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone neutral? Or opposed? Okay, applicant, you do have five minutes if you'd like to address any of the concerns that were brought up.
I'll just address a few items that Carol brought up. Indoor bike storage, I noted that, we'll work through that. Obviously, we have a lot of tenants here, so we can definitely work through onsite bike storage. As it relates to Lytec, it's noted on our drawings in air, I apologize. Again, our client, this project, just phase one, is probably a $40 or $50 million investment for density and housing in Des Moines. They explore multiple equity raises, funding mechanisms, all those things. We don't know what that structure's going to look like yet. We'd be happy to share that when we get further down the road. We just don't know what that looks like yet. So, I think that is all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion and
I move staff.
Any discussion on the motion? Everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? And abstentions?
Or pass.
Pass? Okay, motion passes, thank you. That's the end of our agenda. Are there any --
I just wanted to, you know, Justin was here tonight, then John, who's going to be replacing him, was able to join us just to get a flavor for it, so hopefully, this is a good flavor for him. But he'll be formally on the commission at the next meeting, but so, you can go say hi to him.
Welcome.
He's not Laura, how about that? So, after we adjourn, if you want to introduce yourselves to him, step on the way out, but he'll be joining the discussion in two weeks.
Great, we're glad to have you. All right, that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.